Hey everyone! In this video, this is gonna be very different than my usual videos where instead of just showing myself playing matches, I'm doing what's called a "study session" where that I actually have some time to study, look over some replays on my matches and I thought it'd be interesting if I didn't do it, just record some of the stuff that I need to work on from here and try to learn, so it also shows people how I try to study. Well here I got a bunch of recent losses, let me see which one I should start with first. JP, I've been getting more comfortable playing against, but I know I should, let me pick him first. And this video is probably gonna be around an hour long, so maybe depending on how much time I spend, it's probably just gonna be 3 matches that I go over, but let's see. Yeah, let me get started with this one. Every time in this match, I'm gonna do some labbing as well, just wanna see where I'm going from. I'll go back. What did I do? That was an input error of some kind. Okay, I'm over this now. But this JP player was doing it by mama quickly, he was using the fake ghost. Jump over, like that, okay, that I remember. Let me go back. Yeah, I kept using the fake low ghost, but that's... Now what can I do? Let me just fall another bit, so... Yeah, probably would've been better off just doing the booms instead of jumping. Jumping, I believe, I beat him in the previous match, although they have a catch, but then he started using the fake booms. Yeah, I could've gone with the booms there, I should've did that. That left myself open, alright. The only thing with JP is if you're too far away, he could just outzone guy, that's why I was trying to get closer. What else is, let's see. That, okay. That way I got close. Should've probably tried medium kick for this one, I got to recover in time. Alright, let me see, how far away was I? Yeah, I was too far, if I was a little bit closer, I could've had a chance to do something. Let me go back, so... First thing I did wrong, okay, I was jumping way too much in this round, it looks like. I'm not biting myself out with the drive meter, so that's a positive. Why did I do that? Hold on, let me go back. What did I press? Medium punch. Gotta start using that light punch more. I saved the medium punch for punish counters. I'm being patient here. Alright, what did I press here? Did I press light punch? One. Yup. Let me just take another look at this. So I did try to adjust for mediums and light. Should've waited. Did I press anything here? Go back. That cost me too far. I pressed medium kick that time, that also cost me. I gotta be more patient with attention to my distance, so I can know what buttons I press. So the jumps, I did not really do too bad, it was just a matter of pushing the buttons at the wrong times. Round 2. That's one thing I gotta stop doing. In close range, should not parry, because otherwise, they're gonna do the command grab. I gotta pay more attention to that, that's a bad habit I had. If I just tried to block instead, I could've just jumped. Alright, that was a good parry though, perfect parry. There I got lucky, let me see, was that an empty jump when I didn't press any buttons? That's right, okay. I did learn from round 1, I did not press any buttons this time, I just did a regular jump. Let me get aggressive, well fucked here pretty much. I gotta try to lap this scenario, see if I can actually recover in time to avoid the command grab, let me take a look at this. Well, I did EX amnesia. Is it EX? EX amnesia. Ohz. Heavy punch. I gotta lap this. It's in a corner. Okay, I took the toe, yeah, that's good. Hell of a bad move, that would've cost me if he did a DI. Pretty good here! Alright, hold on, let me see if I pressed any buttons here when it got me. No, I did... No, I did not. You know what, let me rewind this, because it's gonna finish the rounds. I'm gonna lap this scenario, so there's no replay takeover, like in Tekken. Alright, so... Dope medium punch followed by boom. Let me take another one more time, then I can jump in. Alright, I think I remember this. Let's see if I can lap this out. I hope there's a future update where this game gets replay takeover. I'm gonna go into the lab. I feel like I'm over this sequence, I may have to go back into the replay, but let's see. Alright. Let me do a wake up, okay. Looks like I already practiced this. Open the amnesia. Oh, wait a minute, you know what, I'm gonna record, so it makes no sense to do that. Hmm. Oh, you know what? How am I gonna record this? Oh, you know I gotta go back, I gotta switch, hold on. I'm doing this the wrong way, gotta beat the opposite, I gotta select JP here. Alright, now I should be able to replicate this. So I can figure out how to switch. Dammit, alright, fuck it. Don't remember the... Alright, I just moved more magnet, I don't remember how to switch. There we go. Alright. What do I have for guy, yo? Oh, that's right, can I, got some blocking, want me to get knocked down? Alright. Alright. Oh! Actually, let me change the wake up. To go backward. Make sure I get the timing there right for this. So... Let's see if I can replicate this. No, actually, let me wait a little bit longer. Fuck, again. Ah, fuck, 1v1. It's OD. Alright, could've gave me enough time. Alright. Try this again. Oh, fuck, okay. Try this again. Oops! Try this again. Okay, can't get down, try it again. Alright, you know what? Hmm. Let's try this. Let me see if I can get this right. Oh! You know what, it's not gonna work. Um, let me see, you know what, let me see if there's no way around this. See if there's no way I can lap this properly. Maybe I can't lap this, hold on. Him is doing it wrong. Ah, shit, that's right, he hit me. Alright, go back. Let me see something. Ah, I just gotta stood over again, shit. Alright, no, I can't have this, I don't think I can, so... Let's see what the next replay is gonna be, let me go back, see if I'm gonna choose next. We're just gonna practice that actual match, let me see what replay's I have. I did better than I did in a JP match. Don't need this anymore. Which one do I want next? Let me watch this one, the jury player. I generally have trouble when this rush down character gets me. Well, they're so far, so how am I gonna lose this one? Good job giving the distance. I think I was trying to do a boom here, but the heavy punch came out. After this. Wait a minute, let me look at the input, I'm on the right side here, let me see this. Charge it back, be parried. Oh, you know what? Here, they don't charge long enough. All the first mistake I made, I was doing real good until this point though. I did medium kick, I think, again. Let me see. Yup. Feels like in the JP fight, I did that one too close. I think I pressed light punch, yeah. Gotta pay more attention to how close I am, know what buttons I press. Now I'm doing parrying too much, I wasted meter. That was a mistake, hold on. That had to be a bind error here, why would I go for throw? That had to be a bind error, because if I continued just doing this combo, I could've been level 1 and won the round. Now I'm in burnout. Let me see the range here. This is good range for the medium kick. Now, did I try to do a flash kick here when it jumped up? Too, too far put over head. Nope. Yeah, I didn't do that out there, see if I catch him, it was patient, that was my fault. Let me take one more look at round 1. Going for that throw cost me, let me see what else I did wrong here, medium kick. A close range, that was something I shouldn't have done. It's gonna... Right, in here. That was the first mistake I made. Now I'm jumping, I'm trying to catch him. I don't know what the DR is saying, I didn't take much damage, so... That's fine. There's gotta be an input error, why would I do the, go for throw? I guess I wasn't ready to do a flash kick there, alright. Let me see what I did here. Nothing necessary for me to lap so far. I can see. Now this train blows. Now, there I was trying to catch him doing the low projectile, but I wasn't paying attention. He has 1 ball. So he can do the projectile, he could've do it here, but there's no... He doesn't have any stocks, I can't even pay more attention to that. No stocks. Yeah, that was, this was bad, he's +8 on block and that, and then no stock, so I shouldn't have done that. Gotta pay more attention. Still got a good mom. Need a, oh, I fucked up. I was too far away to do that. Blocking this was fine. He has no stocks. Yeah, there was no need for me to do this. Oh, you know what, he didn't kill me, why did I do that flash kick? Yeah, for me, that was just bad defense, wasn't that really doing any rush downs, so... Mess up a combo on bad defense, so let me see what else. I can find here that I can lap. What else, who do I wanna lap here? Um... I got 2 blockers in here. Alright, let me watch this one. Next weekend, I'm probably gonna start learning Blanco. I have the same problem X use them in the LCQ, I may wanna learn them, so... Probably wouldn't be my main, but still, it seems fun. I guess, last one day I gotta lap, second time is that. There was too far, I don't think I could sweep. Who was that? That was his heavy, forward heavy. Now I believe I can punish counter back sweep, that's another thing I gotta test. I believe right off the bat, I see 2 things I can lap. Alright, so here I try to punish counter, but how? Let me see. Let's start with those flash kicks, let me see. How far is he here? That's past sweep range. Uh, probably would've been better for a sweep than that, I gotta lap that. I'm gonna clear myself all already. Alright, that'll do it. With those slash kick, that was me anticipating a Blanco ball attack, so that was why the dance. Now I'm trying to be careful managing my meter, I should've been more aggressive here. That's me anticipating a Blanco ball again. I'm doing pretty good here in burnout. Didn't not take a lot of damage. And this one didn't want to lap. Alright, so it's medium headbutt. Let me look at this. Alright, so drive rush into the medium headbutt, that was a good counter there for the flash kick. I did want to make a flash kick too, could've been more patient. Alright, he's looking for the range, so get, go onto the booms. I tried to do a boom there with a slide. After this, let me see... No, I just stood up. Too far from there. That was a good back dash though for the throw, could've been better at doing that. That's how to punish the air Blanco ball. Another heavy. Uh, should be done soon. Think that's gonna finish us, that should... No, okay. Alright, now it's hit the lap of Blanco. One of these 3 things I could test out. Go back. I know I can punish Blanco with the approach, medium punch and flash kick, I wanna see if I can do a better counter. Do I have anything recorded already? Alright, let me see, do I have anything? What is this? Let me see. I didn't notice, let me figure this out. Hmm. Okay. Know what? I'll leave it for now. Give myself some space. You know what, how do I do with Blanco walking in the air, let me take a look at commandless. Okay. Alright, get that down, so that's 2. Let me record other stuff. Wanna give myself a few seconds. Whoops, small one. Yeah, I just like give myself a couple of seconds, so I can actually time everything better. Alright. Then I have... Um, I want this to be the same amount, same amount of frames. Okay, that's good enough. Um, let's do it from here. Alright, go... Frame data, 5 frames. Try this again. Okay, so... It's dependent on the range, so... Quarters, nope. I can see how this Blanco ball would be tough to deal with. Timing's off. Alright, so there's so much 5 frames. Oh, that's right, this is 7. Alright, so... I just got this approach, I like it, that's 5 frames, so... Just practice this, too late. Huh! I got the timing now for this, so, but this seems to be... I get the timing now for this, so... But this seems to be the best one. Looks like I'm blocking the... That's five frames. Five frames. I get better than cast, like... Let's try this again. Minus... Huh. Okay, so I can't cast. Uh, too late. Come on. Like, I believe so. Have two options. Either standing... Timing's tough, but... You're gonna get the... Oh, you know it, but that's... You know what? Hmm. So, closest... So, closer to seven. This is on guy. I'm getting gonna be doing this more often than not, so makes more sense to do this. Let me see. Let's see if I cancel into here. Now, I'm not getting that combo down. Alright, this seems to be the best option here. Oh, you know what? I should do the EX one as well. Completely, that's gonna be safe on block. I gotta get this combo down. Let's see if I cancel. Canceling is, for some reason, I'm having trouble. Maybe do it one more time. Doesn't even work on canceling. But it seems to be the best option here. Yeah, that seems to be the best option, because I got also flash kick if I get the timing down. I just do one more, now I gotta move on to the next. Alright, at least... Let me do the EX one. Ah, okay. Try this again. Ah, fuck it. Let me make sure I get this down first. Nope, didn't wanna do that. Alright. Just need to see... Minus six. Yeah, I cannot punish. That's what I thought. Where's double check? Yeah, okay, so let's forget that. Oh, that's right. Um, let's try this range. Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay, so I can... This range. That's eighteen. Thirteen. I can't do it, looks like. Okay, so yeah. Oh, okay. So, this range. Yeah, I can't punish counter. Oh, okay. So... I can't punch counter, but he just barely reaches me. I cannot punish. Alright, so... If close, I can definitely punish him. Alright, so cut that far down. One more. Ah, shit, deleted the back, so... Nope, wrong one. Let me see the frame depth. Alright. That's thirteen. Not overhead. Okay, so can I do a double punish counter, looks like? Nope. Hmm. If I'm not close. Hit it once. I can't do it twice. Oh, wait. Yeah, I can. Hold on. Ah, keep doing that. Alright, looks like I can't punish him. Try one more time. It's tough, though. They're gonna move forward. Then that comes out. I'm moving forward, so of course they're gonna do that. Yeah, that's gonna be tough for the timing. Too far. Okay, so... Does it from this range? Alright, so is it just four? Can't punish. Can't punish. How much meter to take away? Oh, we have a meter. Alright, so... Oh, it's not even a punish. I do one more. Okay, so... Oh, wait a minute. Okay, hold on a second. I can block. That's not overhead. Huh. Oh, damn. That does a good amount of damage. Maybe just start practicing this. I don't even need to use punish counter for this, if I have level three. Here's a whip CA. Okay. Now I'm gonna scuff, because it's not overhead. Why, I'm gonna push him away too. I can avoid the slide. Okay. This is better. Oh, this is much better. I get the timing now for this. Yeah, so in that range, you can't do anything. I can push him away with that, so... If I'm in a corner, I can just do that. Slide switch. And I got this level three. I can do that. Okay. This covers a little more range than a standing heavy punch, so... Let me figure out something else. Oh, whoops. Thirteen frames. How much? Oh, yeah, I could definitely do this. I could definitely do this. Just gotta make sure I hold down. Quarter. Oh, yeah, it's much better. I get the combo down. This is much better. That was something doing before. Do it one more time. Okay, much better. So what else? Well, no, Blanco ball is not gonna give me enough frames to do that. Alright. How much time I've been doing this for? Let me do one more match. Let me go back, do one more replay. Play about thirty thousand stuff, though. This has definitely been worth five. You got that Blanco. Don't need him anymore. Maybe if I just got a Blanco one, I don't need that anymore either. Oh, you know what? Let's do it some more. Let's see... What do I wanna do? Hmm. No, let's do this Kim one. I'm having trouble dealing with a rush down, so... Let's watch this one. I did figure out something yesterday. Yeah, I forgot the frame data for this. I wonder if hot sauce will help with the boom. Yeah, I should've waited. I was too close. Because that one must stay costing one... Almost twenty percent health? I think that one is... Stay from block. I gotta double check that one. See if that normal punishable. The forward and heavy kick? Yep. No, no, back and heavy kick. Let's take a lap that. What did I press here? Pleasure, press medium punch. Looks like I was just crouching. Let me go back. Was I just crouching? I think that's an overhead. Yeah, I was just crouching. What do I do here? Cannot be down. Cannot do the backwards wake up. Huh. Was not crouching. What was next? Even though the medium kick is plus four. The drive work is gonna be a problem. It baited me there. Can I punish this? No, I cannot. Okay, so... Can I punish that medium kick? Throw me here? What do I do here? Alright, so... What do I do here? Oh, I tried to jump. I was looking for a throw. Yeah, that's a round. Yeah, my corner defense is just terrible here. Let me see what adjustments I made here this round, if any. Now I'm trying to get more aggressive. Not game with Chen. Overhead twice. Better. Oh, good defense there. I'm not in a corner, so... Doing good so far. What can drive meter here? Now's a good comeback. I'm more aggressive here. Stayed out of the corner. As long as I do that, I seem like I'm fighting against Kim. Now, lock walk. Should've did the drive work into the knee. What do I do here? Alright, another flash kick. Yeah, the crouching medium from too close. Yeah, I'm doing it too close. That's the one problem I'm seeing all my matching. I'm doing a medium kick crouch too close. And that's what caught me here. Let me see. About fifty percent. Let me see how I get to that point. First knee, I should've did a drive work into the knee, make it safer. Baited me with a flash kick. Looked a second time. Look at all that damage. That's two mistakes. Let me pass all the good sip, huh? I pressed medium punch at the end. Let me just lap one quick thing with Kim. Now I'm gonna go into another replay. Give it to this. I don't have a bunch of recordings with Kim, so... I don't know if I have that overhead recorded. Let me see. Let me see what I have recorded for already. Now I'm playing one, so... Hey, you know what? This is what I want. Back. Alright, so that's what I happened across one. Oh, you know what? Let me lap this first. Let me do that this one a few more times. Oops. Alright, I gotta practice that combo too. Eh, I'm doing it too fast. Oh, I'm doing it too fast, I'm trying to do level 3 super after the flat kick. Now, of course with the back dash, that leaves me open to a regular attack in the corner, but... That's why I'm also in the middle of the screen, this karma I should be doing that. Let me do it one more time. Alright, so, let me see what else I have. That's plus 4. Alright. Try this again. Alright. This is just regular kick. Alright, where's this stuff? I have to slide. Alright, you know what, just wanna see if I have the... Nope, I have the overhead on that one. This one I could probably record over. I've been saying I can record over, I don't need those anymore. Alright, so, let's do five then. Um... Make sure to have five. Alright. That's 3 frames, okay, so that's safe. Let me try this again. Okay, so that one I can punish, punish counter safely. If I toss him out. Alright, I got that down, so... Let me do one more replay, then I'll stop this video. Back. What? Let me watch this one, karma, this Kyiv just walked me down, destroyed me. Let me see if I can figure something out here. This is gonna be just a replay. I think the headbutt is safe, so I gotta lap that one. Did I have enough time to charge there? I wasn't even charging. Ah, that's not a bad habit, I guess I'm doing the DI's. Simple counters. But they are doing better at keeping him away. Okay, so the headbutt, he can cancel into, well... The headbutt, he has enough time to cover into the DI. Remember that one? Let me see the headbutt, brain data. Oh damn, yeah, I cannot punish that, okay. One. This person knows the range for Kyiv. Went into that punch. How much meter does it take away? Look there, I just take a good amount of meter. Ah, I don't know why they did that. Something's done here. That level 2. I'm not trying to do here for the DR. That range. I don't think I can punish from there. Can't punish from there. So... Yeah, the best option here is probably using EX boom, but I did that, that's gonna take away 2 balls. Would I have time to jump? Hmm. Yeah, I couldn't punish this backdash, that's probably the best option here. He just took away my meter. I think that, this OD flash kick was me expecting for that. Told him heavy punch again. At least that's my guess. The frame data for this headbutt in the corner again. He's not, was he trying to do the... F3? Plus a lava, yeah, okay. Definitely cannot punish that headbutt. Yeah, that was me anticipating a punch. He set me up with those heavy punches earlier. Let me put the flash kicks. Probably could've, hmm... Thing is, if I did a drive rush, he probably could've reacted from that far away, because I wasn't up close to him at all. Alright, let me watch one more replay, see if something else I can lap. Let's do Kami. I know I definitely have a bunch of points for her. Now for the dive kick, I know I could punish it, but I gotta be standing, blocking. Alright, if the drive rush cancelled. Doing good here so far, and the pressure on him. Ah, that was what caught me. Moving up close. Alright, let's see what I do here, Kami's corner again, tough, oh... I didn't have, here's a jump there, let me take a look at the end part, so... On the left side of the screen. Let me see what I did here. I know I tried jumping. So... I'm covering the time, okay. I'm gonna throw. That's probably like when it's throwing me. Woo, good counter. I'm gonna counter with the air throw. Ah, I should've, I feel expected that knuckle. Nah, I don't think I was able to react to this. Yeah, I cannot react, looks like. What do I do here? I tried jumping, what? Tried jumping again? Nope. At this time, I was ready for the drive rush. Again, that's me trying to anticipate dive kick, I'm trying to anticipate the dive kicks too much. Drive rush, which was actually worth it. Oh, another mistake, I don't know why I did that, driving back, no need to do that now. Now, what did I try to do instead of the drive impact? Castle is down. Oh, I tried jumping, it was too late. Oish, not gonna finish me, fuck. Hold on, I pressed the button here after the first punch. He's plus 2 there. I press medium, okay. Yeah, that was my fault. Alright, let me lap the dive kick a bit. Then I'll stop recording for this video. Alright, let me just practice dive kick, I know I can counter that. Oh wait, let me go back, hold on a second. Ah, I gotta save. Pause if I got the dive kick saved. Let me see where I gotta record it. Yeah, I got all this last parcel. Try this again. Not a dive kick, but I still wanna practice. Yeah, practice the cancels. Need to practice this. Good, too late. I'll actually get to dive kicks in a minute, so... Come on. Anyway, I need to practice this for qualis. Not gonna turn damage because of the light attack. Do it again. Okay, I messed up the timing there, I was gonna do a flash kick at the end. Ooh, that's too late, this seems like for the castle. There we go, okay. Let me see if I can do it a few times, then I'll go on to the next thing. Nope. One. Gotta get that timing down for that. I gotta time it down there, I wanna do it during a well. It looks like I cannot do it consecutively, I gotta get the timing down. Damn, it's a flash kick. One. Ah, alright, come on. Do it one more time, then I'll switch to the next action. Alright, let's do the next one, see what this is. One. Alright, I know what that is. It's for the dive kick. Well, I think this one's from when I was in the corner. What's this one do? Yep, this is it. So... He's plus, I'm plus 3 by crouch, but... I'm 0 there. Plus 2 from this range. Down plus 4. It depends on the range for which, not just the range for where you block the dive kick, but also if you're crouching or standing. Yeah, I cannot, it's only 3 frames. Minus 2, if I block up. I get the castle down. Done. Thing is, when you're guy, you're generally crouching all the time, but... I feel like this. You gotta be ready to stand. But you gotta be up close to punish it, though. It's not practice cancels. There we go, I got the cast now. Come on. I have the level 3 here, fuck. I don't even think that's a good answer to do. That's not much damage I can do with a level 3. I can nail it. Nah, I can't even do a level three now. You know what? It's not gonna do a lot of damage anyway, because of scaling. Yeah. But starting with a light attack, it's not gonna do much damage, so. It makes no sense to use level three now. However, level one probably good things to do, but I could push her away, so I gotta remember that one. Not always the most damage I can do a combo, but matter. What puts me in the best situation when? Pass again. If I could put it that way. I could do one of the guys, you gotta come, could just do this. Just do heavy. Let him come in. That was an accident. I could just do this. So I move, I jump, just do this. Do more damage, so. It doesn't do the flash kick, but. Hours? Let me see something. Have it one more time. Eh, doesn't put it too far away. Nope, did a full combo. How far away is this? Yeah, so I was so. That's actually better. Let me take a look at damage again. Twenty-two ninety-two. Yeah, it does level more damage. Level one's super, but eh. Flash kick. Then I can save my meter. Hmm, they have been doing this for about an hour now? Yeah, definitely hour, so. I'm gonna record for this video. I hope you enjoyed watching, and I'll talk to you next time.